... certainly. And then, like I said, if you want to make things... and we have a part of the grade, right? The biggest skill is all they do. He comes out pretty close in it.
Oh, I see.
Well, I have. Pretty much. The desktop, you see what I mean? It's open hall. And then it'll all begin here bottom on the ground. This is the rest of the table.
Okay, and where's this at the bottom?
Just right number fourteen.
Oh, okay. Those are my four fingers.
Yes.
Right, just left, go down, go left.
Yep.
Okay.
If you have any issues, it's all right. I promise.
Josh, do we have a sign in for a comment?
Yeah.
Cool. Are we ready? Josh, are you ready?
Yeah.
Whenever we want to start recording, we'll call our meeting to order. Thank you. I'd like to call to order that September fourteenth meeting of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District, this is their regular monthly business meeting. Let the record reflect that we have Director French absent today. She told us last month that she would not be here, but all other directors are present. Could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda from the board?
Make a motion to accept the agenda?
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is accepted and adopted. We had a sign up for comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items prior to the meeting, but no one signed up. Did anyone miss the sign up and would like to speak? Miles Schlesinger, would you like to come forward, please? And Miles, pull the microphone right up to you if you would, please. Thank you.
Miles Schlesinger, Lincoln City, Oregon. I'm on the planning commission and I'm a nag, so I asked the city attorney who was there this week what's new on the Devils Lake Regatta Park deed restriction. And he said to me that they are kind of, it's on his desk, but he hasn't gotten to it yet, and he'd like some help perhaps from the Devils Lake Water Improvement District to fund the program of getting the title company to research the deed and find anyone who's alive, if there is anyone, which there is, because I found that, excuse me, out early in my investigation. And I think that the city wants some money before they start to do the project. Now, I don't know if the board wants to make an offer of funding part of it or what it is, but I told him that I would bring it up to the board at this month's meeting and you can talk about it among yourselves and determine whether it's a project that we should do. I am also interested in promoting a Devils Lake Fishing Derby after the spring kids' fishing derby, but I'm not going to do that and all the effort unless the deed is fixed because, as you know, they're not allowing food or beverage there unless it's a regatta, and there hasn't been a regatta since nineteen forty-one. So, that's for you to decide, and if you decide in favor of it, then you've got to decide how much. And quite honestly, I don't think the title company, a local one, would have to do very much work, and they typically do not charge for this kind of work to builders anyway. And I was a builder in Portland and got lots of information on properties that were available and what the history of them was, et cetera, et cetera. So, I don't know what the delay is, but I think they're thinking they'll delegate it to the title company.
Thank you. Thank you, Miles. Appreciate you bringing that up. Are there any other individuals that would like to comment before our meeting that weren't able to sign up? Mr. Dooling?
Pat Dooling, forty-seven ninety-nine northeast, East Devils Lake Road, Otis. I don't have any prepared remarks, except I want to comment on the machine that we've had on the end of the dock for over a month. It's a great idea, and it's been working, and the water is clear, and it's first step or maybe second step in a process that's kind of exciting, and I'm glad to be a part of it. And that's really all I have to say, except it seemed like a successful thing.
Well, Pat, before you leave, a couple of things. You're talking about the airstream that we placed there.
Right.
That the district voted last week, last month, excuse me, to purchase, and we had installed that on the end of your dock, which pulls water out of Horseshoe Bay and which has historically been an area that collects algae, and then it starts to decompose and creates quite a smell.
Exactly right, and it's been decidedly clear compared to years past.
Yeah, I think I was up there Monday or Tuesday, and the water was pretty clear. The airstream pulls almost a million gallons an hour, pushes that through and adds oxygen to it, and it's, the way we have it located, we have it pulling water out of Horseshoe Bay and out into the lake itself, and probably about a hundred yards out into the lake, you can still feel, experience the push of that motor.
Our deck up above, we can see that going way, way out.
And my thought was that, we were there, I think, on Monday, and there was almost no indication of an odor, and normally it's overpowering in that area this time of the year, and so I personally was rather pleased with it myself, just for your information.
Good. Well, we are too.
So, one other question I have for you, Pat, was, is the difference in the algae blooms in the water? Because typically, in that area, it seems like the wind comes out of the northwest, blowing south, but when the wind turns around and comes from the south, does it push the algae back into that canal?
Last week, it had pushed a thin film of algae back into the canal, but this week it's absolutely clear. You wouldn't even known that there was any algae there at all. It was crystal clear.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good to hear. Thank you, Pat. Are there anyone else that would like to speak prior to the board meeting? Okay, with that, we will continue with unfinished business, and we have committee briefings. The first one would be the sewer committee. Normally, Brian Green gives that report, but I think that he's gone, and so Josh, are you going to give us a little update, brief?
Yeah. You guys want me to go out there or we go here?
Either way is fine. I think you're fine. Just make sure to speak into the microphone so we can all hear you.
I spoke with Brian earlier today. He's stuck in Philadelphia, and I just want to say thanks for everyone showing up when we pass along, that we appreciate you showing up. And he apologizes for not being here to give the report in person. He asked me to give just a really brief kind of happenings, is what happened at the last second of two workshops that we had, sewer workshops. They went really well. There were approximately eight people from the community in attendance. Former Mayor Dick Anderson has been coming to those, and he also attended that one. So, we had some good discussion amongst the residents and amongst the committee members that we had present, Mitch Moore and Brian, and Kent was also there, I believe, as well. If I'm missing anybody, I apologize. But I think there was some, a couple of good points brought up. One of the residents had brought up a point for parking in the sewer, that even if you have a new sewer installed, or if you have a new septic installed in your yard, it takes up quite a bit of square footage, and some of the lots around the lake can be limited. So, just another positive to kind of put up there for potential sewer-ing is the fact that some people that are stuck in that situation could possibly free up a whole lot of yard that they never had before, and that's just something I hadn't heard come up in the workshops before, so that was a good key point. Other than that, like I said, there was some great discussion back and forth, and I think that the sewer committee is now currently working on some potential funding proposals from professionals to see about the feasibility of getting it in financially.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I know I wasn't at the last meeting. I was at the first one, and unfortunately, I was out of town. Bill, I believe, was there. Did you have any other questions?
I just wanted a little follow-up by asking Brian about some kind of documentation as to loading of nitrate, phosphorus, what have you, in the lake, and whether or not there was a legitimate reading somewhere in our records, archives, that initiated this push for the project. So, was there any follow-up or information that was recovered that we could hear about?
I think in regards to the nitrate data that we just got, what you were talking about, we had talked about the historical cores, I think sediment cores that were taken in Devils Lake, and I believe that is the data that we have on top as far as the nitrate in particular, being a driver for the sewer and septics. And I can locate that information out of the reports and bring it up again. It should be on our website, posted already somewhere, but maybe do a little more reorganization for that, so.
So, wondering if the core samples from a couple of years ago, or is, so are they the latest ones?
Yeah. Yeah. To the best of my knowledge, there's been nothing done in regards to identifying that nutrient since then. Other than, of course, our new equipment, which is picking up the numbers that we are taking on our regular sampling runs, and when we're sampling out for dissolved oxygen in the middle of the lake as well, we're picking up nitrate numbers, but unfortunately, those are in the current right now, and they're not going to do as much good for historical information, obviously.
In your interest, or your opinion, what's the best way to accumulate that info? Is it physical measurement?
Time. Unfortunately, time. And that's, you know, that goes for our dissolved oxygen levels and a lot of these other key factors we're looking at when we talk about the aeration and how we want to change the water quality in the lake. This is going to be that same thing. These patterns haven't been identified before because the information just wasn't there. And part of that's due to technology. We have new, more accurate technology now in regards to sampling water quality, especially on a regular basis like we're doing.
So, is that going to give us a regular reading of those situations?
Yes, yes. At a minimum, monthly, we'll have a reading on nitrate.
So, within a year, we could take that information and overview the whole situation of the lake comparatively as to what we have on record and what could have been deposited in your...
Absolutely. As long as you remain objective about the data, you know, that that's the timeframe that it was collected in.
Can you list that as a topic for next month?
Nitrate?
The data, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
No problem.
Josh, I have a question. So, is Brian going to produce a summary of the workshops on information collected to the board?
Unfortunately, I don't know, Steve. I don't know on the committee level what his next action is as far as the communication to the board.
So...
I guess the thing that I'd say is ask him to do that.
Yeah. I think, you know, I have an opinion about this board's responsibility for sewer-ing the lake. What I want to make sure that happens is that the public understands that this board can assist in gathering data, but sewer-ing the lake is not the responsibility of this board. We can assist, we can facilitate, but part of that means that we collect data and we analyze the data, and we figure out our next steps with that. I know that Lila Bradley with the city would like to hear from that committee on the response, the outreach, the postcards that we've sent out. So, I think we need to, especially with that committee, and all committees should be reporting to the board, but especially this committee. There's a lot of volunteers that spend a lot of time, and we need to make sure that they're spending it in an effective way.
So, I guess what you're asking, Steve, is for the next meeting to have Brian available to summarize what we found out so far from both our survey and the workshops, is that correct?
Yes, and hopefully, once they look at it, what their next step is.
Josh, can you communicate that to Brian for us?
No problem.
Do you know when he's going to be back in the area?
You know, I think he said Tuesday, but don't quote me.
And their scheduled meeting was for tomorrow, but he won't be available. Does that mean the meeting is canceled?
He said for me to go ahead and leave the meeting in place, and if anyone shows in or shows up, that he will communicate with him to connect and hold a meeting.
So, is he going to try to call in or something like?
I believe so. That's what it sounded like.
Okay. Good. All right, so that's the next scheduled sewer committee meeting is for tomorrow at four-thirty at Oregon Coast Community College, so that if anyone likes to, would like to attend that. Next, special projects and events and communication committee report. Do we have somebody from that committee here? Nobody?
I do.
Oh, cool.
So, special projects, yes. Oh, no, I was, special projects, we've done a West Devils Lake Solve Pickup, garbage pickup, and it'll be on the nineteenth of this month, and meeting places, I'm not really sure of. I believe it is at Blue Heron Landing.
That's my understanding.
That's where we're going to start off, and then it's two or three designated points along the route that will be going from north to south, or, yeah, north to south. Then we get to the south end, we'll turn around, and we'll get on the other side of the road and do south to north. So, it's in coordination with the city. I don't know if they're going to be involved with it, but we have our original members that are going to take over that and proceed with the cleanup. Other than that...
Can I ask, what time is that we're supposed to gather?
Ten o'clock?
Nine.
Nine o'clock, sorry.
Okay. Nine o'clock?
Supplied. They'll be on site. Before we start...
So, since people in the audience or outside the audience on TV couldn't hear that, we'll be gathering at nine o'clock at Blue Heron Landing and begin from there. All safety equipment, all bags, everything will be provided. Should be a fun time. I know that we did East Devils Lake Road in the spring, and that was, I think we had seven or nine of us there that day, and it took about three and a half hours, I believe, if I remember correctly, and we collected five hundred and fifty pounds of trash that was along the road. And so, at this time, we're going to try to do it on West Devils Lake Road, and then probably, I assume that later on, after the grasses die back along East Devils Lake Road, we'll try to make another attempt to do that too, because summer has provided a whole bunch of new trash out there for us. Lucky us.
So, and the next meeting, the special projects meeting, will be tomorrow at the college at three-thirty P.M.
Great. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, thanks.
Save our shoreline water monitoring committee, Mary Ellen?
Well, our committee met at three-thirty today, and we had a full agenda, and everyone was there, so that was kind of fun. Oh, by the way, when you clean up West Devils Lake, there's a branch that's hanging over the walkway, you know, the hiking trail way along the road, and you can't get...
The sidewalk?
It's a branch that's blocking the thing, so if you bring a saw, sure, I would think the city would have noticed that by now, but anyway, that's not, that would be a special project.
Can you give us a physical address?
It's along the part that has the, both sides have a rail, and you're going around the curve, and there's like a birch branch that's just, it looks like it didn't break off, it's just grown there, you know, all the way across.
Looking for water, I'm sure, looking for water.
I don't know. It's just completely blocks anybody walking along there. They have to go around it, edge around, or go out in the street, which isn't a good idea. Anyway, that's a project.
We'll write it down.
Okay. Bring a saw. So, the first item on our agenda was the aquaponic floating garden update, and we have a picture here. I'll have to find it. And it's doing well. These four are herbs. These Jack Strayer gave me, they're blue-green sedge. The four on the corners are white lilies that actually are alive, but it's passed their time. They're putting up little tiny leaves, but the big leaves that were there have floated away. Well, I've netted them. These came from the Bear Valley Nursery, and they're doing well, too. I've got stakes in there, I forgot to write down. This curly Q thing seems to be doing the best. These came from Bill and Julie's yard, they're grasses. All of these plants came from Bill and Julie's, and this is a winter cabbage that I added when one of the ferns died. So, we do have one fern, though, that surprisingly is putting up new shoots right there.
So, Mary Ellen, so you'd say so far, how long has it been in?
About two months.
About two months since you would deem it a success, is that correct?
I would, and if anybody wants to just build half of this, I think we could get the high school, you know, or a Boy Scout with an eagle, eagle, you know, project looking. Half of this would be twelve plants, and you could probably put two plants in each of these baskets. We're writing up the whole how to build it thing. This would still be probably about a hundred dollars. This whole one was a hundred and fifty dollars, counting everything, everything that we had to buy. And we used everything we bought, that's why it's this big. It's about four by eight feet.
So, the plan, excuse me, so the plan is, are we going to, you're going to keep that in all winter?
Mm-hmm, yes. Yes. I'm going to see, I'm going to gauge and take pictures regularly of it, kind of weeding it too, because the initial growth has died off, and then the new growth has taken over, so I just pull off the dying parts and make it look nice for the picture. But the aerator really cleans it out, too. We have the Rich Christie or Christie Rich aeration device about here on the dock, down here on our dock, and we just run it through, and it likes it, you know, it likes the cleansing, getting it clean. So, our aerator, even though it's smaller than the one the board bought, it seems to be clearing up the algae. I came back after hitting that, running into that tree on the walkway, but I got around it on a hike, and this was filled with algae. Our canal was filled with algae, so I turned on the aerator, and it was just a matter of two hours, and the algae was, it was a much cleaner-looking area rather than that algae just sitting there still. I think algae doesn't like movement, is that true?
Correct.
Yeah. So, the aerator provides some movement for it and just moved it right out. It was kind of nice to see instead of just that sitting there. But, back to my meeting. Anyway, that was the aquaponic, it's called, not hydroponic, it's aquaponic floating garden.
So, how do you maintain the dirt integrity in these pots? Does it not dissipate?
Well, I'm sure it's going to float away in the winter, but they'll be established as aquaponic by that time. But you start out with two sheets of newspaper in each box, and then you fill it with dirt, put the plant with the root ball in it. We're not putting teeny-tiny plants in, we're putting established plants in the water and ones from the garden, from Bear Valley. So, we just took everything that came with the plant and put it in there and then put dirt around it. The newspaper holds the dirt in there, even though the water is up to the little plant's neck, kind of up to the, it's floating right there on top of the dirt. Oh, you can't see me.
So, does the newspaper, does the newspaper biodegrade, and then the roots are established enough?
Yesterday, before we took the picture, Larry went in and waiting around, and he could just take the newspaper that was above the water, it had soaked off, you know, and he could just take it off before it floated out into the lake, and so we just cleaned it up, and so you can't see the newspaper anymore around there, but it's in there holding the dirt in a little longer. And that's the purpose of it, is to get the plant established, and then whatever is there, and we added some more for that cabbage, we put some in there, and we added a little bit for these guys, because it was low and we had a bucket of dirt, so we just added some more to them. Yeah. But I think there's very little maintenance, you know, maybe once a month during the summer.
So, is there ongoing maintenance then for the root system after the newspaper's gone, or is it strictly...
Got a root system going. I saw a lot of roots on top of the lattice that the baskets sit on, there's a wood lattice, but I don't think it's gone through. If any roots have gone through, something ate them. I would guess grass carp, but I haven't seen any grass carp just waiting around there for something to grow through. And nothing has attacked the top, so I expected the ducks to have a little salad, and they didn't. I thought I would have to scare them away. And the plan is, when the wind and cold weather approaches, we'll just move this, move this around to our slip, our boat slip beside the boat, and it'll be a little protected from the wind, and we'll see what happens during the winter. I'm guessing this cabbage makes it. I think the grasses will make it, you know, but I'm interested to see what the other plants will do. It's all an experiment, so it'll be fun. But, you know, if someone wants to plant plants that they want to try, the hydroponic store down on Highway One... neck, um, kind of up to the, it's floating right there on top of the dirt, the, oh, you can't see me.
So does the newspaper, does the newspaper biodegrade, and then the roots are established enough?
Yesterday, before we took the picture, Larry went in and waiting around, and he could just take the newspaper that was above the water, it had soaked off, you know, and he could just take it off, and before it floated out into the lake, and so we just cleaned it up, and so you can't see the newspaper anymore around there, but it's in there, holding the dirt in, a little longer, and that's the purpose of it, is to get the plant established, and then whatever is there, and we added some more for that cabbage, we put some in there, and we added a little bit for these guys, 'cause it was low and we had a bucket of dirt, so we just added some more to them, yeah. But I think there's very little maintenance, you know, maybe once a month during the summer.
So is there, uh, ongoing maintenance then for the root system, after the newspaper's gone, or is it strictly...
Got a root system going, I, I saw a lot of roots on, on top of the lattice that the baskets sit on, there's a wood lattice, but I don't think it's gone through, if any roots have gone through, something ate them. (laughing) I would guess grass carp, but I haven't seen any grass carp just waiting around there for something to grow through, and nothing has attacked the top, so I, I expected the ducks to have a little salad, and they didn't, I thought I would have to scare them away. And the plan is, um, when the wind and the cold weather approaches, we'll just move this, move this around to our slip, our boat slip beside the boat, and it'll be a little protected from the wind, and we'll see what happens during the winter, I'm guessing this cabbage makes it, I think the grasses will make it, you know, but I'm, I'm interested to see what the other plants'll do, it's all an experiment, so...
Yeah.
It'll be fun, but, you know, if, if someone wants to plant, plants that they wanna try, um, the hydroponic store, um, down on Highway 101 in Lincoln City, he said, uh, greens, and I said, "Name a green," and he said lettuce, you know, so any greens, he would put in there, yeah. So, uh, I'm getting in touch with an aquaponic expert up in Portland, I have to get his name and phone number, someone told me about him, I'll do that in October, and, uh, maybe he can give us another list of, um, plants that would work in here. We're developing a list of what works, but, uh, we need more, and just running it through, you know, July through September, um, doesn't tell us a lot, except that they're still alive. We'll see what happens through fall, winter, spring, and, and then we'll report on that, but, that should be fun.
Mary Ellen, a couple questions I have. Um, so, just for the public that's not here and again, um, so, why would this be beneficial to the lake?
If you can't plant in front of your, your, uh, lake frontage, this would be helpful to use the nutrients in the lake, if you can get plants that will suck up the nutrients, that were over-nutriated in the lake. So this would, this would provide a little bit of planting along there that can't be doing the submerged kind, which was the second item on our agenda, was the submerged planting update.
Right, and, um, I hear people talking about native and non-native.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you consider the plants that we're experimenting with are native?
Uh, most of them, these along here, these four, uh, let me see, and those, that one, those came directly from the lake.
Okay.
Um, from the lake, the other ones are kind of experiments, just to see what, what could be done in here, and I was interested in the herbs to see if they would go, because, you know, someone might be interested in just having a little herb garden off their, off their dock.
But nothing would be considered an invasive?
No, no, none of these are invasive, the lilies are the, are the white lilies, rather than the yellow.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll get to that, too.
Well, I got a, I got a chance to go down and look at this a couple times, I think it's a great project for anybody who wants to take it on, um, you don't necessarily have to have a, a green thumb, and you, as you've stated, you've been able to change out and see what works and what doesn't work.
And really, it's very low maintenance, 'cause it's being watered, it's being fed automatically, and it just is there.
I see it if, uh, people have their grandkids visiting or whatever, they could get involved on a project like this. Um, the other thing I like about it is, uh, it's portable, so you can move it around. Uh, maybe when, uh, the kids are over and you wanna do jet skiing, you move it out of the way...
Move it down.
Yeah, 'cause it floats, and, and you can bring it back in, but, uh, good job.
Yep, yep, it's kind of a fun, fun little thing to walk out in the morning and see if, see what's alive, you know, (laugh) see what's flourishing. So Jack Strayer, uh, reported on his submerged planting update, and Kent, of course, has a, update on submerged plants, and we had a lot of ideas thrown out during the committee of what to try, as far as fencing and how to hold down plants, and, uh, we're working toward, uh, knowing what we're doing before we buy a bunch of plants to throw in the lake, so our purpose is to know what we're doing before we spend the money on plants, yeah. Uh, the bacterial and harmful algae bloom, uh, testing ended with Labor Day, we did an algae test the Friday before Labor Day, 'cause we had some algae out there, it was negative for microcysts, so that was good news, um, and all along, it's the usual that we expect that, uh, Rock Creek and Thompson Creek off the lake are, are red, and they turn to yellow and green by the time they reach the lake. Four times was it that, that we had yellow?
Three.
Three times we had yellow?
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that we've got a good filtration cleaning system in those areas to, before it reaches the lake. Uh, we also went through our 2018 committee goals, and I put some handouts out with pictures of the plants that we identified as, um, harmful, um, these are our committee goals with the revegetation, please cross out shoreline there, of the entire lake, uh, to achieve a twenty percent coverage, uh, we're monitoring for bacteria, harmful bacteria and algae blooms between Memorial and Labor Day, and these, these are our 2018 goals. The continuation of the aquaponic floating garden project, and know what we're doing there, and then prevention, early detection and control of, uh, invasive plant species in the lake and around the lake, and this includes the tanzy ragwort, the scotch broom, mallow, yellow pond lily, that thing that really is taking over a lot of our areas, and the yellow lily, uh, yellow flag iris, I'm sorry, the yellow flag iris, and we've got that on ours, but they died down, so I don't know what to pull up yet, so when you see these bloom, you'll know. So you have pictures, the, the pictures are on the back table, along with our goals, um, and, uh, if you have these on your property, please pull them out, um, and throw them away, and get, get the roots, and don't let them seed again, and just watch for them to come up, where our goal is to eradicate those. And I think, if there aren't any questions, that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Yeah, I'll leave that on, Lisa.
Projects update, Josh?
Alrighty. Number one is our Devils Lake Aeration Project. Uh, currently, the district is working on, um, a couple of letters to provide to property owners that have a brief description, outline scope of the project, compressor location, noise levels, and anything we plan to do as a district to solve that problem, if it becomes a problem for anyone. Uh, once we finalize that information, we're gonna get around to the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association, which has been doing a great job of helping us contact the neighborhood folks in the area, um, and get this information to them to make sure that we don't have any complaints before anything's installed or put in, uh, and this was at the request of Lincoln County as well, uh, when we met with them to, uh, see about permitting the actual placement of the unit, so, we're moving along nicely on that, uh, also...
Just a quick question on, along those lines, Josh, when do you expect that we'll be making contact with those property owners or those that...
I expect that to happen, uh, next week, next two weeks tops.
Tell them within the next, but...
Before the next board meeting, certainly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
One more interested party in that respect, in the, um, Yautu area, related to, uh, Wabusha Heights Dock, it's a community dock that's accessed through several people in that community, so, one individual owns, uh, property directly next to the boat launch and was, um, expressing interest in, in moving forward with an air compressor unit, so if, if that, uh, other location is down, then we have an option.
Outstanding.
Yep.
That's great news, thank you. Um, along those lines, we're moving along great on the project, um, uh, Tom, our project manager, was in the office today, and we've got some work done on the aeration, as far as the permitting side of things. Um, also this month, I'll be contacting and working with the board, so we can finalize a, a move to draft an RFP, because we will need to obtain, um, a few bids, um, according to ORS 270B, um, to stay in compliance with state rules for, for procurement and, and expending our funds on that project. Um, so that's very exciting, uh, that we'll be able to do that, and we spoke with, uh, with Brad, um, Brad Johnson, is it, at the Corps today as well, and this was, this was his, um, his take on the project as well, is that we could go ahead and move forward and internally and, and have those, and it'd only be better once we go to the table with permitting at that point, because then we'll have, um, a better plan from whomever is bidding on this, uh, 'cause we can get whatever information that the Corps requests at that point to bring to the table, uh, to be able to get the permits approved, so, we can do those two things at once, so we won't lose any time waiting on one or the other. Okay. The website has been doing great, this is our fifth consecutive straight month where we have had an increase in our hits, um, in people accessing the information there, reading the documents, uh, so that's exactly what we wanted, um, it's, you know, that was definitely a, a good, um, a good call as far as the resources of the district to get that website revamped, because every time that I go in there and I make even some of the more milder changes, just to be like, oh, well, you know, you can, this button's a little bit clearer now, or it's a different color, I see these little ticks going up and the people making hits on the website, so, uh, it's becoming a very effective tool, uh, for us to get our information out, which is extremely important, um, as we've, we've said time and time and again, sitting in these board meetings, that, that getting the, getting the public involved and letting everybody know what's going on is very important to us, and, and the website is continuing to be, uh, um, a better tool every day for that for us, so. Um, and also, along those lines, I know I've spoke with, with many people, but this goes for, for people in the community as well, is if you're on Dilwa.org and, and you see a suggestion, or you have a question about anything, um, there are several different places that say, "Contact us," and that email will go straight to me, to the, the lake manager email, um, and I will certainly look into that, I can fix a lot of the cursory stuff myself, so if it's a typo or something, you know, nothing's too small, go ahead and shoot me an email, and it'll take me a, a brief amount of time, I would rather have it fixed and, and in the right spot, um, and there is just a lot of content on there, so I cruise through it every now and then and, and find a little bit of this or that, or a comma out of place or something, but, nothing's too small, so please let me know if you have any recommendations to revise the website, uh, or anything you would like to see as far as information up there, um, the board is always willing to discuss that as well, is if there is some new type or, or category of information that you think would be useful to have that in the public on that as well, so. Thompson Creek, we have been in contact with DEQ, unfortunately, we don't really have any change this month, uh, we have learned that they've been aware of the issues in Thompson Creek, and I know we've talked about that in here in the board meetings before, too. Um, I'm still looking over the data, a lot of it is in regards to the total maximum daily load, which DEQ has been putting a lot of effort and resources on, um, upstream for many reasons, Devils Lake included, as far as finding out what is, what is traveling in these waterways and where it's ending up. Uh, so I'm still looking at that data right now, as is DEQ, is still collecting information in Thompson Creek and in the watershed, um, and they're piecing together their, uh, their picture as well, to find out the information that they need to, to, uh, try and help abate the problems, as they, like I said, they are aware and they are working towards it, as, as are we. Um, so we have a very open communication with them right now, and, and I intend to keep that as open as possible, and keep a regular contact with them to see if there's anything on either side that we can provide to each other, so we can continue moving forward with, um, identifying, uh, some of the sources of that bacteria that's, that's just plagued that waterway for, for many, many, many years.
Who are you working with? State of Oregon?
Yes, yeah, Department of Environmental Quality and DEQ. And, uh, unless there are any questions, that is the update for projects for the district.
Okay. New business, um, we have the CTSI Fee and Land Trust Agreement.
Sure.
Could you explain that, please, and...
Not, not a problem at all. Um, the Sleds Tribe, uh, being, uh, their own, their own nation, they're separate from certain rules and laws of the land, some of those being taxing authorities, um, uh, CTSI has been great, uh, great stewards in the past, because even though they're not required many times to, to give, um, taxing contributions in, in every situation, they do go ahead and do that, because they realize that they have a connection to the, the land and the waters and the environment as well, and they wanna help perpetuate, uh, conserving those and treating those the appropriate way. Uh, that being said, um, the Sleds Tribe has a few properties that are within our taxing district boundaries that we receive revenue from every year, uh, that they would like to put in a federal, what's called a Fee to Trust Land Program, um, that can be very complex, but essentially what it means is we, if we don't have any objections to them entering that program, um, then they're completely absolved of, of any kind of, um, real responsibility to, to ask us about the land as far as the taxing of the land is, is concerned itself. Um, but as I said, they, they contribute whether they have to by taxing rules or not, and that's what this agreement they've drafted says, uh, it is an offset of taxes, so instead of us receiving the tax revenue from them, they're giving us a donation every year, which they are not required to do, a donation equals the same amount, uh, essentially, uh, within a few dollars, I believe, of what we would receive from their properties if we were just receiving the tax revenue. Um, so it's, it's truly not much different to us as far as revenue, um, other than us agreeing to not have any objections to, um, the Sleds Tribe entering these three properties, I believe it is, into their federal Fee to Trust Program. So, any questions on that, I know that's, that's quite a bit, and it's not something you run into every day, certainly, not something I run into every day either, so...
Josh, I have a couple questions.
Sure.
So, um, as a special district, uh, is it within our power to enter into an agreement like this?
It is.
So, do we feel that, uh, an attorney that represents us should look at this agreement?
That is completely a board decision, um, as far as how you would, you know, to what level you would like to verify that, where, you know, wherever you're comfortable, that's certainly something to consider.
So, um, looking through the agreement, and I'm not an attorney, um, uh, I would be concerned to the one-sided language, uh, into the agreement, and trading, uh, tax revenue, and I know that the tribes do this, uh, enter in the trust, and I, uh, you know, I love the relationship that we have with them, uh, but, uh, do we run into setting precedents with agreements like this in other areas around the lake? Uh, those would be some of my concerns, and, uh, double-checking that it is within our power, and if it's right for us to do. This agreement was, uh, written on August twenty-second, I don't really feel that I had enough time really to review it, to make a decision.
Um, is, how, I, I guess my question would be, Josh, is, um, do we need to enter, make a, a movement on this agreement today?
No, no, absolutely not, and, and that's not what CTSI has, has expressed to me either in providing the agreement, um, they, they just wanted to do exactly what we're doing, uh, get it to our board members and have it in a public forum discussion, um, and do what we need to do in that respect, and then come up with our decision.
Well, it seems appropriate to me that, um, maybe we have our attorney look at this and make sure everything's fine, talk to SDAO, um, uh, not that there's anything wrong with it, just that that, that would be our due diligence to, to do that prior to moving on this, that way, the board has another, you know, month at least to, uh, to look this over and make sure that, um, it's, it's in our best interest, as well as the tribe's best interest, to do this, and, um, as we move forward, before we move on that. Is there any other comments from, I know, Bill, you have experience with this in other areas, is that right?
Do we already have an agreement with them, um, a year ago or something, we went through this same scenario, I don't know if these are the same properties, but, yeah.
No, we didn't.
It didn't.
It was brought up, uh, a little over a year, about a year and a half ago, um, they approached us, um, in initial discussions when I was, um, acting, uh, lake manager, and I know that they brought it up at that time, and then, uh, things, it's come to this point now, so...
So it's probably the inter-betch's interest to have legal, um, help.
I agree too, I think we should just have our attorney look at it.
So, yeah, if you do that, Josh, and, um, and send out, uh, have him mail us, email us, or whatever, uh, his opinion on how this works, that'd be great.
No problem.
All right, thank you. Next, under new business, uh, district vehicle replacement, we have a, do we have a district vehicle?
We do have a district vehicle, it is, it's also known as the truck.
Ah, the truck, okay, all right, I think you have a presentation for us. Did I see it parked out in the parking lot?
It is, yes, it's, it's, it's next to, yeah, it's in the inside part.
So we could take tour, we could take tours afterwards?
You certainly can. And if you want to, I'll give you a chamois, too, because...
I heard, uh, that you can't ride in the passenger seat unless you've watched the Flintstones?
You bet, you talked to Whitney, didn't you? I told her it's all right, I know where the smell's coming from, and it's off the seat, it's okay. Okay, let me put this up real quick for us. Okay, here we go. Oh, no, we don't wanna update anything, no, please. Okay, here we go. Oh, no, we don't want to update anything. No, please. Okay, that is a little rough for the resolution there, but can everybody see that okay-ish? Okay. So... Can't even see it on slide up there, okay. There we go. Okay, here's the current vehicle condition report. It's been in service for somewhere around 15 years from what I can tell from the title and information records we have in the office. The exterior is getting quite a bit of wear on it. A couple of folks have mentioned it to me outside of our own organization, that it looks like it could use a little TLC. The skid plates underneath it need to be replaced. A couple of them have kind of rotted off the sides of the bolts and the attachments, so that's a safety thing we kind of need to get on top of. The transmission plate was the same way. It was in pretty rough shape. Some of the attachments from the frame of the body, one of the mechanics I took it to noticed, and he was concerned about a couple of those needing to be replaced. I've got the next slide here. I'll show you. I went to three different mechanics and averaged out the best I could, what they thought was the most pressing things that needed to be done on the vehicle, and we came up with somewhere approximately around $7,000. Now, give or take, there's a few things here and there that I didn't even notice. The tires are kind of cracked and old, and, you know, a couple of safety things that need taking care of. That being said, and the age of the vehicle, we have the option, and of course, it was presented to me when I went to the car dealership, that we could potentially trade in our current vehicle, either a lease or a purchase, and we've had some very intermittent, just kind of by-the-way conversations on this. But I did get pricing last month, and it was sent to the board, and everybody's kind of kept an eye on it and looked at it here and there, and I just sent another one out this morning, and I do apologize for the lateness, but the dealership called me and said everything changed on their incentives and all the prices are different, so I felt compelled to put the new information in here for a discussion. It's changed a little bit from the last one. It looks like a smaller truck. I think it was a Chevy Colorado, like they consider a midsize, so something pretty close to what we have right now. The lease was at $450 a month, at five years, at 10,000 miles a year. Initially, it was a three-year lease, and it was much better looking than that, and I asked them why it changed, and it's because we are a public agency on the commercial side of purchasing. Because we have public-owned plates on the truck, and we're putting public-owned plates on the truck, we can only get pricing and information from this side. So it changed things a little bit, and it made the purchase price of that truck approximately $25.5. That being said, I'm gonna skip down to the bottom there where I put a note. These prices, the purchase prices include the truck trade-in. If we were to trade it in, the lease prices also do. The difference there, which was explained to me over the dealership, is if you trade in on the lease, if there were any additional equity that didn't need to go into the lease, you would just lose it. If you do a purchase, that equity would go into the new vehicle, which you would have ownership of.
What's the value of the current vehicle?
The current vehicle's value has changed, and that was one of the things quite a bit, and I don't know if it's because they want to trade it in, if they want it, if the actual vehicle is that. I was seeing values online around $2,000 and $3,000, but they have said that they'll give us up to $8,000 trade-in on a new vehicle. So that's substantial, considering that the vehicle has an accident on its title they're aware of, it currently has a check engine light, and it's got kind of a laundry list of things that, punch list, we need to take care of, just so, you know, we're safe on the roadways.
Corrosion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Could use a good cleaning inside and out again, too. But that is the most current numbers as of this morning, and I think these were based off the same thing. That was like a Chevy midsize truck, and I think that the big truck was a Dodge. I just told them to go for the most, you know, whatever was most heavily incentivized for us. We are fine to go ahead and turn the vehicle into a car dealership, just like you normally would if you were a person, called George's uncle at SDAO, and he said that would be more than fine with us. Alternatively, there is an option to do some surplusing and enter a pool and all that, but given the fact that our fleet is one vehicle, and we're thinking about turning it over every 15 years at this point, and we don't really need so much of a fleet requirement, so we're fine to just go ahead and trade it in if the board decides that we want to replace rather than repair. So, and I believe that is, that is the end of my lengthy slideshow.
Josh, in all honesty, I can't see anything from what's up there. It's blue, and it's from the side, or the resolution is poor. I can't see what was actually placed up there.
Okay. This is our, this is our most important thing here, and I think this is the biggest thing the board needs to consider when you're talking about replacement versus repairing. We have a small truck at $450 a month, 10,000 mile a year lease, five years. That truck could be purchased for $25.5, straight out. The full-size larger truck, they could lease at $300 a year for three years at 10,000 miles, or purchase that truck for $26,300, which is $800 more than the smaller truck. Or, the previous slide, we do have our repair option, of course, on the current vehicle. Give or take, that is somewhere around $7,000 averaging in from different mechanics and their opinions and pricing.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to look it on my email, too, so I can see it.
So, just to open up for discussion, so, we do have in the budget monies that we've allocated.
Right, right now, we have $42,808.65.
Correct. Now, that's for the replacement of a car and a boat.
Right.
Okay, so, and then our allocations for this year's budget would be an additional $10,000. So, our count at the end of the period's going to be 52,000. So, point of discussion, I guess, I don't think if, in your contract, which in your contract, you do have a vehicle to use, that you should be driving around in a car that's unsafe, and I do believe that it represents the district. So that being said, I guess, what I would like to bring up for discussion, really the only other two points, which is, should you lease or should you buy? I don't believe, on the coast, one of the arguments against buying would be that 15 years, or even 10 years, you're going to have a truck that looks like the truck today, okay? So if you're spending $26,000 to $28,000 for a purchase, you do own it, you build your, your equity's already in it, because we're paying for it, but is it a better deal to spend $300 a month, okay, for a three-year term, 3,600 times three, and basically, you're not paying any maintenance, and then we reevaluate what our needs are as a district, because our needs may change? And, you know, you had mentioned a three-year lease. I don't know if there's an option for a two-year lease, but if, I guess my point is, just because we have the money and the budget, is it best to just spend it outright? When things are changing in the district and needs may change, and at that point, you could reevaluate it after two or three years.
Yeah, Josh, my recollection in our discussion here, your presentation, was that the $300 a month lease also included us trading in the truck.
Correct.
So, the value of the truck is already taken off of that lease, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry to down.
Right. It's the down payment, so we wouldn't have a down payment, is that correct?
Correct. There's no, yeah, there's no money out of the district in those numbers. That's just our trade covering and whatever passed.
Well, I think we should look at the lease program versus the outright buying of it, just for the fact that we can upgrade at our discretion and/or change at our discretion due to the needs of the district. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion in that we would lease the full-size pickup for the duration of their lease period with option of either replacement or continuing the lease.
The full-size, that was the $300 a month one?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Yes. So, I guess I wanted to make it clear that that's the direction that the board wants to go. I think it's showing our intent, but you're still going to have to bring the deal to the board, the finalized paperwork, so that we can approve that deal, correct?
Yes.
So we're authorizing with this motion, telling you our intent to go out and get the deal and present the deal for a leased truck?
The only issue with that and getting the entire board together is these prices change day by day, and that's literally how it's been explained to me, and all these are different from my first presentation. So I don't really know the best way, you know what I mean, to shrink that time gap in between the decision and whatever we're doing.
Let's get the motion with a dollar amount up, too, that we will approve for the terms. Would that work?
Well, before we move on that, what type of truck is that? Can you tell us the particulars of that?
It's a four-wheel drive with some type of extended cab on both of them, both the smaller one and the bigger one, and that's really all I gave them for equipment.
What brand?
Dodge brand.
Oh, Dodge for the big one and Chevy for the small one.
Right, right.
And they, and really, if it's a brand thing, they said pretty much any brand. They can, since it's commercial pricing, if someone feels that something's better than something else, they could get that. But Dodge were the most reasonable, so I told them to use that.
Well, the other thing, Josh, we can meet in executive session and do just the final thing, so.
Because it may change when you go there.
Yeah, and, you know, that's what I mean, when I, if I show up in the morning and say, "Okay, we're ready," it's probably different.
Right, and so, so I guess the, you know, in the discussion here is that try to put together this deal, and then we can meet in executive session and move on it and do that at that time, because I think that is part of an executive session.
Well, and I believe that it should be a full-size versus a small.
Okay.
So we have a motion. What was the motion again?
My motion was to move forward on the full-size pickup in the lease situation.
And we have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Josh, move forward with that, and then as soon as you can
Yeah, I think-
angle a deal, then try to get an executive session together with at least three of us, and I know that I'm available most of the time, at least in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah. Next couple of weeks, I, until October, yeah, fourth, I think.
I will, I will literally call them in the morning and tell them where we're going, and for them to go ahead and get something together for me and start that process, and then tell them, you know, "Once you, once you give this to me, I'm going to schedule a date. Now can you guarantee this exact vehicle and price and contract?"
Get it, get all the particulars, everything.
Try to get them to throw in an appropriate boat to go with that canopy.
I already tried for a jet ski, but, you know, nothing, nothing, coming up dry. Okay, I will take care of that in the morning, and then I'll get around to everyone and let you know where we're at.
Josh, do you feel that there's any added equipment that you're going to come back to the board with, in addition to what would be standard?
That is what they said it was. I haven't seen a window sticker. I don't know what's in it other than extended cab and four-wheel drive. They're-
Canopy or, for the district vehicle, I guess, I'm trying to anticipate, is there going to be additional things, because one of the things that you can't do to a lease is modify it without taking it back to its original.
Are you serious? No jet ski? No, I understand what you're saying. I told them that I didn't, you know, there are no tenet windows, no 22-inch rims, you know, no additional anything like that, you know, we don't need undercoating spraying, we need the sticker price, and we need this thing as it rolled off the truck, so. Is that what we're-
Yeah, and we don't need a canopy on it, is what I'm saying, or anything.
I agree 110,000 times, yeah.
Just wanted to make it clear, especially with the extended cab.
You know what, if you want to get something next to the cab in our current truck with a canopy, when it rolls up there, it's a good time.
Thank you, Josh.
Sure.
All right. Any non-agenda items from the board?
I just wanted to let the board know that I went to the Special District Association workshops that they have. They have these almost monthly, and if anybody hasn't been to one, I really, I think, you know, you should think about going. They're very worthwhile, so.
I think when Bill and I first came on the board, we both attended one. We thought they were excellent, too.
Have a lot of really good information.
No other?
One more, one more thing.
Okay.
Seeing as it's coming down to the end of the season, I was wondering what your plan was for the boat.
That's something I've really been putting some thought into, and I'm not exactly sure, because I really want to get out there in the middle of the lake at a couple of points this winter, at least monthly at a bare minimum, because I need to take those middle lake samples for our DO numbers for the aeration at a bare minimum, and I'd really like to keep collecting as much data as possible, but Bill knows the weather out of the lake more than I do in the winter, so am I going to be able to get out there?
FYI, if you're planning on having the boat available, you might want to keep it out of the lake until the day you need it, because otherwise you'll be babysitting it, pumping it out, whatnot.
A little bit of that. When would you recommend that I have it out, by December or earlier?
End of the month.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yep.
That's what we're all shooting for.
All right. You're the professionals here. I will go with that knowledge. So I will plan on pulling out the end of the month, and I've had some conversations back and forth about storage, so we'll work through that, too, and decide where we want to put it.
Okay.
Another comment for the public and for those in the audience that may not know, the boat races are this weekend, this Saturday on, I mean, next Saturday, tomorrow Saturday, it's 23rd, I'm sorry. Yeah, the 23rd, which happens every year. World records are broken at a regular basis here on our lake. Last year, I think we had about 30 to 40 boats on the lake. The lake will be closed for the boat races. A good viewing point would be Regatta, or actually, I don't know if you can get in the pits down there. Do they let you down there where, what's the name of that park over there?
Brown Bear.
Brown Bear. But anyways, real exciting. Just wanted to mention, it's a good event. It normally goes from about 10 o'clock on Saturday until usually about 4:00, and on Sunday, if people want to pay extra, they can take another run at it, and we have boats anywhere from 10 feet to capsulated boats that do 160 or 170 miles an hour on the lake.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Okay. Additional comments from citizens? Any citizens like to make additional comments? Additional comments from the board? Thank you all for coming tonight. Enjoy your evening. Thank you.